Good evening. Welcome to all of you who are here with us in the auditorium and those of you who are watching at home. First thing, we'll do our call to order. And Mayor, would you mind doing the invocation?
Not at all.
And Mark, would you do the pledge? Thank you.
Let us pray. By thy grace, we come to God, to life, to truth, thy ways, through earth, the path, thy flesh, to teach us to pray. Bless us as we assemble tonight to do business in Pitt County. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Let's face the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, let's vote on the agenda, please. And first item, we have a public hearing. James Rhodes, how are you tonight?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have two zoning-related public hearings for your consideration tonight. The first one is not a new one. You've seen this particular request before you a couple of times. It's just that the time extensions have run out and Ms. Slaymaker is now ready to proceed on with her daycare center. So we'll go back through the details since this is a conditional use permit and it is a quasi-judicial process. With the quasi-judicial process, of course, several things have to be considered. Folks that are here that may want to go forward and make any comments will need to be sworn in by the clerk. Any evidence will have to be in a detailed fashion. No ex parte communication is allowed. And of course, any appeals to this decision will go to Superior Court. So with that, Madam Chair, we'd like to have anybody that's here tonight that would like to speak to this particular item come forward and be sworn in.
Anyone here who would like to speak at the public hearing on this item, if you'll come forward, you have to be sworn in. I don't see anyone. Do you have to be sworn in?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Rhodes, our clerk.
The details on this case concerns a particular piece of property within a manufated home
park. It's located at 1916 Dixie Lane in Country Estates Mobile Home Park, which is located off Mills Road, right near McGowan's Crossroad. I'll show you a map in just a minute. Land use plan designates this area as suburban residential. Just as a reminder, you've dealt with this particular item a few times before. First was approved back in March of 2013 with two successive six-month extensions thereafter. The last extension expired in September of 2014. The request before you tonight is similar to what you've dealt with in the previous times. This is for a home daycare and specifically from our zoning ordinance, a residential daycare facility. Again, not commercial in nature. It's actually within the home itself. And at no one time shall there be more than two or should be not more than or can be more than two children and not less than, has to be less than nine children. So between two and nine, this is always a definition when we come before you. There is one concerning residential daycares and then those for commercially related ones. Also in our zoning ordinance, it does limit the hours of operation to be less than 24 hours. As you recall, Ms. Slaymaker had requested previously that her daycare run between 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. the next morning. So that's 23 and a half hours versus 24. So property in question is located right off Mills Road, nearest intersection with Page Road. McGowan's Crossroad is right here where Ivy and Mills Road intersect. Specifically, you can also see the area that she's within is considered residential within the manufated home park. And those areas shown in tan or brown on the screen are also residentially related. There is a church at the corner. That's the blue color and a couple of smaller commercial operations shown in red. The green color is actually undeveloped property in the area. Within our zoning ordinance, there are particular requirements that have to be met. Security fencing is one, and that's one of the reasons why this has been delayed to some extent. Ms. Slaymaker now has her security fencing installed. Also, it deals with locational issues as well as the hours of operation that we mentioned. As with any conditional use permits, there's certain criteria that we have to review and ensure that it doesn't have a dramatic impact upon the community. The first, will it materially endanger the public health or safety? Through staff's review, we feel like this will not. It is a daycare facility for children within a residential area, and we feel like it will not impact the area substantially. Will it substantially injure the value of adjoining property? We feel like it will not. The proposed hours of operation will not substantially injure the adjacent properties. Is it in harmony with the area? We believe that it is. Again, this is within a residential home, within a residential area, and we feel like it would be consistent with the surrounding uses. And of course, in any case, we also look back at any plans that the board may have approved. And at this point in time, we do not see where it impedes any of the plans that have been approved by the board. So with that tonight, Madam Chair, we do have two motions for consideration. The first is to acknowledge that the application is complete and it complies with the zoning ordinance. And secondly, to approve the conditional use permit as outlined through Ms. Slaymaker's application. That includes hours of operation. And with that, we're ready for the public hearing tonight.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing, but since no one was sworn in, we'll close the public hearing. And I'll ask the commissioners if any of them have any questions or comments they would like to make. Mr. Hammond?
Madam Chair, my motion approved.
Second.
Okay. Any comments? Okay, let's vote, please.
I hit the wrong button. I mean, yes. It's old age.
He said it. Yes.
He said it.
Thank you. And Mr. Rhodes, you're up again.
Okay, the second public hearing for tonight's consideration is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance. And this one is fairly simplistic in that it's just a few numbers that are being changed within the zoning ordinance as requested by the applicant. This particular request is in your package tonight. It is a text amendment provided from Don Brown, and it is to reduce the setbacks for cemeteries. And these are cemeteries that are not on the same property with a church. There is a difference. The proposal was, as indicated in your package, for certain setback requirements. We have reviewed that. That has been reviewed by the planning board as well, and we've made a couple of edits concerning this. So in your package, you'll also see the current requirements for cemeteries not on the same property as a church. It gives the outline of which zoning districts it would be allowed in as far as the minimum lot sizes and any general requirements. And this is where we're seeing, or we've had a couple of requests for some changes. The request that before you tonight, and this has been tempered some by staff and the planning board, it is that no interment shall take place within 50 feet of a property line. Therefore, the setbacks, 50 feet within the property itself, nor within 25 feet of any public road right-of-way. And again, I said it's been tempered a little bit with staff's review and also planning board's review. This is because of some of the comments we received back from the Department of Transportation. Mr. Brown had requested setback limit of only 20 feet. This has been expanded to 25 feet. And that was because of some expansion requirements by DOT. So it is only a five-foot change in what he had requested. And through the discussion with the planning board, it appeared that the applicant was amenable to that change. With this, as with any zoning ordinance change, there is now a requirement through state statutes that we have a consistency statement. That is included in your package tonight. We feel like this is consistent with the intent of our zoning requirements, and we also specifically mention the setbacks that are going forward. Is it also reasonable in the public interest? That statement's also included for your review tonight as part of this motion. The planning board, as I've mentioned, dealt with this at their February meeting and unanimously recommended approval of the amendment language. And we have two motions before you. Number one, adopt the consistency statement and also approve the proposed amendment with an immediate effective date. So with that, Madam Chair, we're ready for the public hearing.
Thank you, Dave. I'll declare the public hearing open, and we have one or two people who had signed up. So if they'll come on ahead at this time, if you'll just step up and introduce yourself, please, by name and give us your address.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Steve Spruill. I'm representing the applicant here tonight. And we just wanted to ask for your favor on our text amendment request tonight. We do want to point out the minimum lot size of five acres. If you applied the 100-foot buffers that's currently in place, it would really reduce the usable size of that five-acre piece to about two and a half acres. So it is kind of cumbersome, and we think our request is in line with lots of other municipalities and towns around the area. Thank you. Any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Anybody have a question?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
My motion approved.
Well, let's get through the, before we close the public hearing, and then we'll entertain your motion. Thank you very much. Yes, sir, if you'll identify yourself, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joseph Cox. I stay at 1640 Ivy Road. This plot in which they are trying to put the cemetery and make these amendments is directly in my front door. It's actually right across the street from my house. My neighbor has actually put up a border so that he doesn't have to see any headstones across the street from his property. We had no idea that this was going to be done at the present time when we purchased our house two years ago. It's going to significantly knock the value of my property down once this is put into play. On top of this, it's going to have tremendous traffic coming right in front of our house and in my driveway, as his driveway is directly across the street from mine and an opposing neighbor's house. So the amendments that they're trying to make are quite unfair. I mean, if you guys don't mind having a cemetery directly across the street from your house, I wish you would consider. This is just, it's not right. I bought my property. My wife and I work hard. We bought our property. We got it at a seriously good deal. And the last thing I need is to have my property value knocked down just because you want to bury somebody across the street from my property. So I mean, if you, if y'all have anything you want to say, he was quick to say yes. That's not correct. And I've got several other neighbors that also stay on the same street with me that I'm in, speaking with, that are going to actually come and contest to this as well. Apparently, they weren't able to make it here tonight, but it is in my front door. When I open up my front door, I'm looking dead at it. So I'm highly against it.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, you didn't have to sign up if you came in to speak to this, okay? Anybody have a question of Mr. Rhodes? Any of the commissioners? Yes, ma'am.
This gentleman just said that it was directly in front of his front door. And then I heard him say that it was across the street. Exactly where is it?
I believe, and I don't have a map in front of me, that he is on the opposite side of Ivy Road from this property. So it would be across Ivy Road, out his front doors, he says. So it would be a separation of the road right-of-way between him and this particular tract.
So the road separates his front door.
Right. And I would like to remind you, what we're dealing with tonight is not a rezoning request. This is a change of setbacks for any property that may be used for a cemetery in the future. So this property right now could be used for a cemetery, but would have to meet the current setback requirements. What's before you tonight is to reduce those setback requirements. It is not a rezoning.
Okay. I need to close the public hearing before the commissioners. No, it was my fault. I think what you're saying is that this is an ordinance change. It's not changing what's there presently.
It is not a change.
It's for any cemetery in the future anywhere.
We are not rezoning this particular project or this particular piece of property. This would be subject for any property that may be used as a cemetery in the future.
Okay. Mr. Garris?
Did you want to close the public hearing?
No, I have one last question.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Was this cemetery there two years ago?
It is not a cemetery right now. There is not a, this is for any piece of property in the county that could be used for cemetery. So there is no interment right now on that property across from Ivy Road.
I'm completed. Okay. Mr. Garris?
So has Mr. Brown purchased this piece of property?
I don't know.
So it is not a cemetery there now?
Not this particular piece of property, no.
Okay. So if I have a piece of property that I want to put a cemetery on, can I do it? Or does it have to meet some kind of?
Has to meet certain requirements. And for example, has to be on certain types of already previously zoned property. It pretty much covers just about any of the zoning districts we have. It has to be a minimum of five acres.
Okay.
And it has to also meet, if you're going to go through this process of interment, has to meet any of the general statutes required by the state.
So this piece is five acres or larger?
It is right at five acres, yes.
Whenever we do anything like this, I'm an idealist. I like to see everybody pleased and accepting of what we're doing. And I would think that it would behoove Mr. Brown and Mr. Spruill to maybe go out and talk with the community and let them better understand what the impact is going to be, what the implications are. I think that's always a good idea.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Hammond?
I approve my motion.
Okay. Mr. McGlaughlin?
At the present time, the zoning is, he's meeting the zoning requirement.
This is correct, yes.
So things are, now, is there anything, maybe I need to talk to the gentleman that was up here earlier. Say anything that you could do to aesthetically improve the visibility of the cemetery that would not be too negatively noticeable from the citizen, the gentleman that?
Excuse me. I can't really speak for the owner on what he would be willing to. I know him well enough to know that I think he would want to be a good neighbor. The increased setback required by DOT of 25 feet, we had proposed 20, is going to give him another, you know, 25 feet of property that he can landscape and dress up and make nice. And again, I think the main reason we're here tonight is about the text amendment, not so much this piece of property or what Mr. Brown intends to do in the future. But we're asking for any property that anyone would come before you and want to do a cemetery on, to not have such restrictive setbacks in it. Now, the gentleman across the street, you know, he's not a neighbor beside us. Certainly, he's affected by what he sees across the street from his property. The 25-foot additional setback that DOT is going to require, I think, will help alleviate that. It won't be right up in his face, for lack of a better word. And again, I think that 25 feet will afford the owner the opportunity to do some landscaping and cleaning up in there. But again, I don't think we're here to talk about that specific project or that specific piece of property. It's the zoning ordinance text change that we're interested in trying to achieve.
Is that it? Mr. Garris?
So he can put a cemetery there right now?
That's correct.
Okay. And what this will do is allow him to have more grave sites?
Do you utilize more of his property? That's correct.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Coulson?
What it seems to me that it does, anybody that's got a small acreage of land, five acres, or close to it, that if we vote for this, we will be affecting lots of potential other properties in the future, not just this one. Is that correct? Is that what I heard?
Potentially, yes.
So I can assure you that having a graveyard next to or across from a property does affect property values. There are many people that will not buy or even consider that house because of it. And while they may still be able to put a cemetery there, the additional setbacks that we currently have is even more than what you're saying. Just a thought, just a comment.
Ma'am.
Okay. Yes.
Just so I'm very clear on it, how is this zoned?
It is currently rural, either rural residential or rural agricultural. It's a residential district.
So and I think, I get what Mr. Coulson is saying, but anyone that's zoned that way could start plopping bodies in the ground anytime they wanted. It's just the only reason it's here is because we're looking at changing the setbacks. So the rule for rural residential, the zoning, is already there. So that may be something that if people are objective to addressing with the planning or the zoning?
I think you're exactly right, Commissioner Webb. If it's a bigger issue, whether it might be a conditional use permit like we just went through with the daycare, where you would review it and decide whether it need to be screening or buffering or additional setbacks, that's a possibility. But this particular use is by right in these districts that we've shown, including RA and RR. So right now, you're correct, it can be placed in these areas. It's just a matter of meeting those prescribed setbacks.
So the legal question in front of us today is whether or not we're going to approve the change in setbacks?
That is correct.
And that we can't consider anything else?
We're not looking at rezoning, not at all.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second? Second. Okay, let's vote, please. One clarification, I think Mr. Webb made a very good point. And if there's a question about whatever takes place on this plot of land, any of the property owners, whatever's built there, can come to the planning board. Is that correct?
Well, again, it may be after the fact. Again, some of these, just like if a home was built there or cemetery.
Right, I understand.
It is by right, and at that point, without changing any of the regulations, there really isn't a recourse right now.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, let me just say one thing, too.
Yes, Mr. Webb.
Even if we denied what was in front of us now, it doesn't change that a cemetery would go there. It just changes the setback.
That is correct, yes.
That was kind of what I was saying, that there was no other recourse. Thank you.
Ma'am, can I say something?
We don't usually, the public hearing has been closed.
But this gentleman was allowed to come up here and answer a question for you, so I walked up behind him so that I could also?
Okay, if you would like, we'll give you three minutes.
I've only, I've got less than three minutes.
That's fine, that's fine.
The property that is across from our house is non, I'm sorry, the property that's across from our house is non-buildable property. It, on the backside of that property, it completely overflows with water whenever it rains, on the back right side and also on the back left side. So it's technically one of the main reasons why we moved was because of the simple fact, it was non-buildable property. So therefore, we never even had any idea that a cemetery was going to go across from there. Therefore, when we looked at our front door, all we ever saw was a big open lot, and we saw woods. So by being non-buildable, I don't even understand how you can put bodies in there if it, if it doesn't, it holds water.
Well, I don't have the answer to that question.
Of course you don't.
I don't think any of us, you know, here do. And we do feel what you're saying and understanding, but we didn't vote tonight to build a cemetery there.
Right, right, I get it. But if I can keep the requirements back, then it's less property for him to actually have more and more cemeteries in.
Okay, so it's 25 feet now instead of the 20, what was it before?
60.
60. 50. I think it was 50. So, okay, thank you for coming. Okay, the, if the scouts would allow us, we're going to reverse and recognize our North Pitt basketball team since it's kind of tight in here. We have some mamas and some daddies here, too. Is that okay? We'll get this done. So first, before we do this, we have some honorable people here with us tonight. We have the mayor from Bethel, Gloria Steinbrenner. Welcome, Gloria Steinbrenner. Good to see you. And we have Senator Don Davis. Welcome, glad to see you. And Earl Aldrich, where are you?
Earl Whitely.
Okay, Whitely, I'm sorry, from Greensland.
Carl Wilson, Commissioner from Bethel.
And Carl Wilson, the commissioner from Bethel. And we welcome you and glad to have you here. I think we're going to hear from one or two of you at the public address. We do need to have a motion for the resolutions. Let's vote, please. Okay. Well, at least we got a packed house now. We do. Yeah. If we could have the team from North Pitt High School, who have won the state championship, if the team will come up first and just kind of go like this, kind of back around that way.
We doing North Pitt now?
Mm-hmm.
How are we doing this? Eagles guy, oh, you trying to get the crowd out?
Go all the way down.
She trying to do.
I'm a retired school principal, so you all listen to me. Yay! Glad to see all of you here. Move on down a little bit more, Ben. Go and get everybody up here. And you adults that think you had a little bit to do with it, you all are welcome to come up here, too, if somebody wants to get on that end.
The family can get behind them. I think the family can get behind them if they step forward a little bit.
Okay, girls, we're going to get a picture first. So if this hunk of you would like to get down here in the front, how about that? You want them to kneel?
Sure, yeah, the front row would kneel. If you could kneel, take a knee.
Yeah, that'd be good, Carl. Cages is taller than our mom.
Okay. Is that going to do it?
I don't know, at the front of the ward.
I don't know, at the front of the line.
Everybody's smiling but one of you. There you go. Get it quick. And this is the first time since nineteen seventy-two, in case you didn't know.
And I did know.
In case you didn't know.
Okay, one more.
Yay.
Okay, that-
Wait, 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 wait.
Wait, wait, we got to give you your little, we're not just going to do a, a picture. Now, if that was me, I could understand. Um, we are so excited to have you all here and thrilled that most of you came. I think we probably are very close to the whole team. Is that correct? Yay. Thank you so much. Um, you've made Pitt County very, very proud. And we've got a resolution we want to read first.
Sure.
And then we'll give that to the coach, maybe, or the principal, I think I saw him.
Either one. We have a resolution to read, and we also have a certificate for each of the players. So, I'm going to read the resolution first, and then in the midst of it, Mike Taylor's going to help pass out the, the certificates. So, again, resolution, it's entitled, "Pitt County Board of Commissioners, Resolution of Recognition Honoring the North Pitt Ladies Panthers Basketball Team. Whereas the two thousand fifteen sixteen North Pitt Ladies Panthers played basketball with remarkable skill, determination, and dignity as representatives of Pitt County in the state of North Carolina. And whereas the two thousand fifteen sixteen North Pitt Ladies Basketball Team earned a sixty-eight dash sixty-five victory over the East Davidson Eagles on March twelfth in Chapel Hill's Dean Smith Center to win the ladies NCHS double A two-dash A state basketball championship. And whereas this was the first state basketball championship since nineteen seventy-two for the Panthers. And whereas the players, coaches, and families of the two thousand fifteen sixteen North Pitt Ladies Basketball Team deserve congratulations for their time, effort, and resources, they committed to, quote, "going all the way" in winning the two A state basketball championship." The two thousand fifteen North Pitt Ladies Panther players are, and got a cheat sheet here for our phonetical pronunciations of these.
You want me to hold the resolution?
Yeah, I, I'm good.
Okay.
Don't correct me if I, if I air, air on this.
Just smile and reach out.
Right.
And if you'll reach out, Mr. Taylor will-
As I announce, and Mike Taylor will, will hand you your certificate. So, we have Jaquah Carr.
She's behind her door.
Samaya Duncan.
Woo-hoo.
Tamea Frisell.
Woo-hoo.
Taquisha Gaynor.
Yay.
Kayla Harris.
Woo.
Here she is. Congratulations.
Yay. Did we have a wrong, did I wrong on that?
No, that's okay. It's all of them.
Okay, we can, we can get you a correct one. Elia Hopkins, if I said that correctly?
Elia.
Elia.
Elia. He's not from eastern North Carolina, but we'll-
I was told to say y'all after each one.
He's learning. He's learning.
Tashada Joseph.
Woo.
Nijun Nakeek Langley.
Hey, you go, Scott.
Yay.
Kondro Meckmore.
Yay.
Dorian Sharp.
Your face is getting red already.
Oh, Kaysha.
Sarah Circe.
Sock practice already.
Cassandra Watson.
Yay.
Kayla Williams.
Yay.
Precia Williams.
Right there.
You're lying.
Tiana Williams.
There she is.
Did we get all the players?
None.
Okay. The coaches, we have certificates for you as well. Yolanda Bowden.
Yay.
Lynn Rogerson.
Yay.
Niju Worth.
Yay.
And Karen Watson. And to, to end the, um, the resolution, it says, "Now, therefore, it is res- be resolved that Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby, hereby recognize the outstanding achievements of the two thousand fifteen sixteen North Pitt Ladies Panthers Basketball Team. Congratulations to the players, coaches, and families for bringing the state title to Pitt County, Pitt County, North Carolina. Adopted this twenty-first day of March, two thousand sixteen by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, signed by our chairman, Beth B. Ward, and attested by our clerk, clerk, Kimberly W. Hines." Would you like to present for-
Yay. Woo.
And I think it's very important, in fact, I think everybody in Pitt County realizes
that this wasn't the easiest thing in the world from the get-go. And I know you all are proud of this lady stepping up, and we're all in Pitt County proud of you and proud of all of these girls and these mamas and other coaches. Thank you so much for representing Pitt County so much.
Golden Panthers. Golden Panthers.
There we go.
I'm embarrassing Tom.
You are very welcome. Thank you all for coming, and we'll excuse you so you don't have to keep hanging around. Congratulations. My husband is from Bethel, and he never played on the championship team, but Mr. Latham was the last coach of a state championship, the boys, I guess. Yes, back in the day. That was a long time ago.
Man, I know the height from way back.
Yes, ma'am. Don't worry.
Oh, there will be no smooching in here. You see how Mark get all the kisses in the house?
Is this, can I have a name?
Yes.
Is she going with discrimination?
Oh, Lord, he grinning on her bum.
Maybe we can touch on it.
Did you get that on TV?
I just did.
Oh, no, you got to get them girls on TV.
Hey, they can't leave, I'm the bus driver. You want me to go back and get them?
I want them on television. They're on television when it's negative. I like to see them on television when it's positive. I would like for you to get one shot of them while they're here. I know it's delaying, but you know, when you get negative all the time, it's good to have some positive, and they need to be motivated. Them come on in here and get their shot.
There, he's not even, he's not ready, and they're gone. And this will go over and over and over in Pitt County.
It will.
Yes.
All right.
All right. Um, and our boy scouts, thank you for being patient. If you will read our first one and invite, or that scout up and his family.
Okay. Well, tonight, we have three young men who we're going to recognize as boy scouts, the Boy Scouts of America, for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. As we call your name, if you'll come forward with your family, scoutmaster, anybody who you brought to support you, and we will read your resolution. So, we'll start with, um, these are really hard to pronounce, but Hunter Felton Mayo. Just kidding. I'll draw humor.
Oh, that is great.
Certificate, certificate appreciation is awarded to Hunter Felton Mayo for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. For his project, he renovated a campsite that was recently spiked in popularity at the Pettigrew State Park. This certificate is presented by the Board of Commissioners this twenty-first day of March, two thousand sixteen, signed by our chairman, Beth B. Ward.
Okay. Do you want to share where this park is?
Pettigrew.
Um, it's located in Crestwell, North Carolina.
Right.
In, uh, Washington County. It's located right next to Lake Phelps.
Okay. Kind of needed some sprucing up. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
You want to get a skin tone? But thank you so much for being here. We're proud of you.
Next, we have Samuel James Matney. He'll come forward.
Welcome.
Again, we have a certificate, appreciation is awarded to Samuel James Matney. For his project, he built five picnic tables eight feet long for the Refuge, which is a religious retreat in Ada, North Carolina. Presented by our chairman, Beth B. Ward.
We wrote out, took a look at those. Congratulations, and thank you very much for your contribution.
And our last, um, Eagle Scout recognition is to James Emory Cleveland. He's here tonight. Or he's not. Okay.
You want to tell us to read it?
Sure. For his project, he replaced the ceiling tiles in the Farmville United Methodist Church classrooms.
Okay. And, um, scouts, we're so proud of you and the fact that most of your projects, in fact, almost all of them contribute to the community and to the well-being of all the citizens. I don't think there's been a project that hasn't been something that's contributed. And we just appreciate the effort. And parents, thank you all, too. of the community. And, um, we've got a few people speaking to the same, um, item, I think, relative to the animal shelter. And if you kind of want to get together and one of you speak that for everybody, if not, we'll hear everyone. So, if you'll start, um, Mr., would you like to give us a go ahead?
Certainly. Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each person will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. I'll keep your time. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the board. All comments should be informative and constructive. The board will not tolerate any profanity or personal attacks.
Okay, well, first, we have, um, Glenn Bowen, signed up. Mr. Bowen?
What's he speaking to? Oh.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate the three of you that just won, uh, election recently. Well, I'm before y'all tonight, as, uh, I went to get my new car tags about three weeks ago, and there was a line, and I was in there thirty minutes. Now, I know a lot of people around Greenville that drive all the way there to, uh, Hookerton to get their license tags for their car. You know, we used to have two stations here in Greenville, now we've only got one, and I would love to see the county commissioners, uh, send word to the governor that we need another place in, in Pitt County or in Greenville for license plates. Um, it's terrible. If y'all have been there lately, y'all know how tight it is. You know, I was in there thirty minutes, you know, to get, to pay some taxes and get a license plate. But that's what I'd like for y'all to do, if y'all will, just, you know, give a resolution or something to the governor. My understanding is he's the one that makes the decisions whether you need other places or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next, we have Scott Below.
My name's Scott Below. Uh, I live at nine oh one Forest Hill Circle in Greenville. I'm chair of the Finance Department in the College of Business at ECU, Chair of the Investment Advisory Committee for the city of Greenville, and have been a resident in Pitt County for twenty-three years. I'm here this evening to urge you to support the consolidated shelter option and place all animal control operations within the county under one roof. As Pitt County's human population continues to grow, so does the pet population. And with the current piecemeal, disjointed, and confusing animal control situation that we have within the county, not all citizens are receiving the same level of access to animal control services. Currently, the county and all ten separate municipalities have their own individual ordinances. For the public, this is both confusing and frustrating, and for taxpayers, it represents a wasteful and needless duplication of services. For example, the county animal shelter requires that all animals adopted out be neutered. This action has reduced the intake rates of animals at the shelter and accordingly saved county taxpayers money. The towns and municipalities within the county, however, do not require their animals to be neutered before release, and in addition to contributing to the pet overpopulation crisis, their offspring often wind up back at the shelter. The cost of this falls on taxpayers, of course, and it's a cost that can be easily eliminated by consolidating animal control services under PCAS. In addition, because of the fragmented animal control system throughout the county, there's no centralized place for owners of lost pets to search for their animals. While the PCAS maintains a website with intake pictures to help owners identify lost pets, most of the towns and municipalities do not. In addition, the holding facilities at most municipalities are very limited and are enclosed to the public. One way to quickly and economically reunite lost pets with their owners is through the use of microchips, which the PCAS requires for all owner reclaimed pets at the owner's expense. Microchipping increases the chances of an animal being returned to its owner, identifies recurring pickups, and since it's done at the owner's expense, saves taxpayers money. Unfortunately, none of the towns and municipalities in the county are currently doing this, only PCAS. Finally, the county has a dog licensing fee for dogs in unincorporated areas, but only thirty-five percent of the citizens reside in unincorporated areas, and since incorporated areas have chosen not to participate, this is clearly inequitable to the citizens of the county. By consolidating animal control services, the licensing fee could be applied across all pet owners equally, which is only fair. Any additional cost could be funded using an ad valorem tax, as is common for funding animal control services throughout the United States. In conclusion, consolidating the animal services in Pitt County under one roof would allow for equal access of these services by all residents and eliminate the wastless, wasteful duplication of services seen under the current approach. For all these reasons, I respectfully request that you support the consolidated shelter option. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Below. Next?
Next, we have Kristen Below.
My name is Kristen Below, and I live at nine oh one Forest Hill Circle in Greenville. I'm here tonight to let you know I am in support of consolidated shelter and all animal control options being upgraded under one roof. I am one of the co-founders of the Pet Food Pantry. We are a nonprofit charity based here in Greenville, which focuses on pet retention. Our mission is to help keep pets in their current homes and out of the shelter. We not only provide free food to those who are at risk of having to surrender their out, animals due to financial hardships, we also do our part in working to address the pet overpopulation problem by requiring and providing free spay and neutering in all our programs. Pitt County Animal Shelter has done a wonderful job building relationships with volunteers and rescues and partnered with nonprofits, allowing them easy access to the animals in their facility. Many of the towns and municipalities are not allowing access or encouraging participation of community organizations and volunteers. When offers for help for free spay and neuter in underserved areas in our community and to help build foster programs in the municipalities have been made, they are either ignored or declined. By putting all shelterings and services for Pitt County in one location, it will give easier access to these nonprofit groups and volunteers to come in with donated community resources that benefit all of Pitt County and their animals. Nonprofits and volunteers save taxpayer dollars. People love their animals, and by having a consolidated shelter, one that supports progressive innovative programs as a whole, encourages the community to be involved. It makes the county look better in the eyes of visitors, and it will help our citizens feel proud of living in a county that takes animal welfare seriously. And when a community works together, great things can happen. We have some of our pantry volunteers here tonight that also are here to show their support of a consolidated option.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, you.
Yes.
Next, Mary Beth Hobgood.
My name is Mary Beth Hobgood. I'm in Winterville, North Carolina, and the executive director of Spay Today, Greenville's low-cost spay-neuter clinic. I'm a Pitt County taxpayer and the proud owner of a rescue dog. I'm here this evening representing the supporters of Spay Today and the animals of Pitt County. I'm here this evening representing the supporters of Spay Today and the animals of Pitt County. We stand in support of Michelle Whaley and the exceptional job that she and Pitt County Animal Services provide to the citizens and the animals of Pitt County. Although Pitt County Animal Shelter is exceptional at what they do, current space and manpower does make the job extremely difficult. If approved, the consolidated plan will be adding all Pitt County municipalities to the shelter workload. This will broaden the scope and increase the responsibilities of the shelter. This will inevitably result in increased shelter intake. As Michelle will explain to you later, in order to continue to provide excellent care to the citizens and animals of Pitt County, we endorse the consolidated county-wide plan as proposed by Michelle Whaley. Spay Today, along with our animal partners, H. Humane Society of Eastern Carolina, Pitt County Animal Services, Pitt Friends, and all members on the Animal Services Advisory Board, will continue to work toward our goal of a loving home for all animals and safety for all citizens of Pitt County. All of Pitt County. We encourage our commissioners to join us in this mission by approving the consolidated plan presented here this evening and allowing Pitt County Animal Services to successfully and compassionately do their job for all of Pitt County. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Next, Marion Blackburn.
Good evening. I'm Marion Blackburn. I'm a former Greenville City Council member, and today I advocate through the Greenville Animal Welfare Coalition. I'm here to speak in support of the plan under consideration to consolidate all animal services under Pitt County's authority. At present, animals and residents struggle with multiple systems, conflicting ordinances, and wasteful duplication of services. Organizing all animal services under one agency would benefit residents, staff, and the animals themselves. Indeed, in the past 15 years since assuming control of the shelter, Pitt County has stood as a paragon of excellence in animal services. When the city of Greenville operated the shelter, it operated as a kill center with a 90% kill rate. There were no adoption programs, no Pitt Friends fostering network, no joint events with the Humane Society of Eastern NC. It was a sad place no one wanted to visit, much less adopt from. Today, that has changed. This year, the live release rate has exceeded the euthanasia rate. The Pitt County Animal Shelter is a friendly place of hope, where families look for their new best friend, and where adoptable animals of all kinds find a new life. This amazing transformation has taken place because of the county's unflagging support of the shelter, its staff, and their vision. Thousands of dollars in grant funding is available that can help, if only we can get all agencies on board. Unfortunately, that is unlikely to happen as long as multiple systems remain throughout the county. At present, Greenville Animal Services still operates under an enforcement-based approach. Trap-neuter-release efforts languish, unable to get off the ground because of a lack of support from the staff. People are given warnings for feeding cats outside. Ear-tipped cats are routinely trapped, giving little incentive for volunteers and nonprofits to continue with their TNR efforts. The department has come under scrutiny for these trapping practices. With a single countywide program, especially an outstanding, progressive one like Pitt County operates, we can remove the obstacles and modernize all animal services. In the process, the taxpayer will save a bundle. One way is through better record-keeping. Peter Marsh finds that as much as 75 cents of every dollar is wasted when agencies fail to keep statistics on intake, outtake, and results. And as the county emphasis on spay-neuter efforts is a big cost saver as well, we can count on every, that for every $1 spent on sterilization, we will save the taxpayers of Pitt County $3.15 for efforts and intake at the shelter. Thank you for your time, and again, I urge you to consider and adopt a countywide animal services program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn.
Last person to sign up is Ron Allison.
Good evening, Commissioners and officials. Congratulations, Chairman Ward. My name is Ron Allison, Greenville, talking about the animal shelter. Right now, the animal shelter situation is the tail wagging the dog, I feel. Basically, Pitt County is a national leader in animal welfare. You have a great shelter, a great staff. You do all the appropriate things, including adoptions, having hours for lost animals to be looked at. You do trap-neuter-release of community animals. When someone comes in to turn an animal in, just instead of taking them and killing them, which is quite common in some parts of the United States and parts of this county, the staff tries to find either a home for the animal, to find out why the animal's being turned in. It could be they don't have enough food and they have a partner with the Pet Food Pantry. Could be that the animal needs to be spayed or neutered, they don't have money, they have a partner with this low-cost spay-neuter clinic. So the county is actually doing outstanding work. The problem is the county can't get ahead because you have a number of municipalities that are doing their own thing, which may range from very good to very poor. But the bottom line is, you're always getting those animals back to the county. So you're spending a lot of effort and time, but you're not really getting anywhere. And you could be eligible for large grants and national recognition if you could get everything on one page. So you're doing a fantastic job, and you're having a lot of issues that I think can be alleviated by a central process. So the dog should wag the tail, and that's what I hope you'll do tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Since we had so many people speaking to this tonight, I hope I get this clarification correct. If I do not, Madam Attorney or Mr. Manager, if you will help me. We're not taking a vote tonight. We're only hearing a report back based on information that was shared by three commissioners at a budget workshop we were holding. And we hold budget workshops prior to the setting of our budget and holding our general workshops. So tonight, we're going to hear the information that has been gleaned by the manager's office relative to responding to some of the information that was proposed at the budget workshop. So there's not going to be any proposal or vote taken tonight on this issue. We're going to also hear from Ms. Whaley referencing some of that information. And you have a public meeting scheduled? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. This Wednesday evening at 6:00.
Will you step up to the mic, please? And the public is invited to this, if you'll make right.
Yes, ma'am. Wednesday, the 23rd, at 6:00 p.m., right here in the Commissioners Auditorium, we will be having our yearly public forum. It's a chance for us to hear from the citizens about what we may be doing well, what we might need to improve on, to share our statistics and our activities. So we do encourage the public to come out.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we'll be hearing from you. And thank you, those of you who came tonight to speak to this. Okay. Next, we have our property tax collection report. How are you, ma'am?
Doing fine. Hope you all are.
We are.
Pitt County combined collection rate for real and personal property taxes for the fiscal year-to-date, July 1, 2015 through February 29, 2016, is 97.22%. Combined collection rate one year ago for real and personal property taxes was 96.43%. The county tax administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary enforcement remedies that are available through the North Carolina General Statutes. These include bank attachments, wage garnishments, sheriff levies, rent levies, the debt set-off program, and in-room foreclosure.
Okay. Any questions from any of the Commissioners?
Motion to approve the report.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, let's vote, please. Thank you. And next, we have our vector control presentation report. Jim Gardner.
Okay. Madam Chairman, Commissioners, just like I start, got a couple of pictures here. This is, of course, everybody knows, we've had a lot of rain this spring. I'm going to show you something that looks like a lake. It's not a lake. This, excuse me, I went the wrong way. Okay, you're looking at what it looks like a lake. I'm looking at it here, too. Sorry. This is actually a rainwater. There's a depression in those woods, and every bit of that is rainwater. There's no inlet or outlet. The water ran from probably two inches deep. As you look through the woods, you can actually see houses. There's houses all the way around this property, or all around this lake, or what looks like a lake. It runs from about two inches deep up to about a foot and a half deep in the center. It's been drying now for three weeks, and it's still probably got another three or four weeks to go. Another item I ran into this morning, just to show another one, this is the kind of thing we see in some of the ditching around Pitt County, and I'm sure everybody in this room has seen it. Unfortunately, and I'll basically start with those pictures, our program is basically based on surveillance and education. We have a community outreach set up through the Health Department. Currently, we have the maternity affair coming up, a time for science this summer. I'll be doing six engagements with students. And we're avail, we're, excuse me, we're available to, I missed one. Also have a presentation to do at the Greenville Housing Authority Community Center. And we're available to speak to any group who has interest in talking about what can be done to reduce the risk of exposure to arbor viruses. We monitor mosquito populations, investigate all complaints. 90% of the complaints are generated by the Asian tiger mosquito. These investigations become educational opportunities. The Asian tiger is one of two mosquitoes known to be a competent vector of the Zika virus, which is in the news today. I would also ask that we do not forget other viruses that Asian tiger has potential for transmitting. Examples are last year's Virus of the Day, Chickagunya, and also West Nile, which we have had here in the past. At present, the other mosquito, 80s Agypti, is not found in the state. The most effective means of control for this mosquito is tip and toss to remove breeding sites. And that's the reason for the picture in front of you. You see, like I say, you see these bottles and cans and everything all over the place. And each one of those is an individual container and is a breeder for the Asian tiger mosquito. We do spray, if investigation warrants, that we do spray. In the fall, we spray the fairgrounds, North Pitt firing range for the law enforcement agencies that are, have to do mandatory night shooting. And anybody that's never been to North Pitt for the mandatory night shooting needs to go one time. Since the state disbanded the Public Health Pest Management Group, there is no support for training at the state level. As with the case with Hurricane Irene, we had to depend on our surveillance data to apply for fee and reimbursement for the extra exposure incurred during that event and any future events. We serve as liaison for the municipal programs in the county. When requested, I do investigations from municipalities and make treatment recommendations. Greenville does mosquito complaint investigations and trapping. And they bring the traps into me to do with the identification, to help them know what they should be targeting. With the loss of PHPM, there are fewer trained individuals to do identification, and no classes have been held in the state for six years to train other folks to do this identification. And without identifying the mosquitoes and trapping them, you don't know what your enemy is. Coordinating continuing education and machine calibration clinics so that all equipment is calibrated for use each year. One of those calibration clinics actually was held right here on 316. We had 24 people in attendance to get their continuing educational units, and seven machines were calibrated at the landfill. And with that, I guess I'll go for questions.
If any of you have a question, I think we can ask it. Are you going to share with us the schedule for spraying that we do usually in the county? Or?
We do not have a schedule. Like I said, we actually, if we have complaints, we go trap it, investigate it. Does it warrant spraying? Is it something that spraying will alleviate a problem? If you have somebody that lives 700 feet off the road, back up against a swamp, driving a truck by there that only sprays a 300-foot wide swath is not going to help him. He's going, you know, I talk to the people, he's going to have to do it with personal protection through use of DEEP or other things. But like I said, you know, if it's a community, a tight community, then spraying in some cases will help.
Okay. Fine. Okay. Ms. Williams?
Mr. Gardner?
Yes?
In District 2, there are a lot of low areas, and not only does water stand for a long period of time, when it's time for the mosquitoes to start becoming a pest, we have a lot of them. And you said it hasn't been tested. What I'm concerned about is how these, have you identified mosquitoes or have you tested areas such as the area along Old River Road, the, out near that area where the water stands a lot, it's murky, it's green, it's stagnated, and it's deep?
Yes, I have. I was out there. As a matter of fact, I was out there this morning. This picture right here is from that area.
What can be done about that?
I'm one person. I mean, I have dipped the ditches out there. There's a large trailer park out there that I went through and dipped all the water all the way through there last week, and I have not got any active larva at this point, which the weather's cooled back off, it slows them down. So I am out in the area, and I'm aware of that situation out there. There's a lot of low areas. But again, if you get, the biggest problem that most people complain about when they're talking about mosquitoes is the Asian tiger. And that mosquito is a very poor flyer. If you're not growing them in your yard, the neighbors probably grow them in theirs. So, and that's really, I say, anytime anyone can put together a group of people that wants to talk about what can we do as a community to clean up, which is where you're going to affect the Asian tiger the most, I'm, you know, day, you know, whatever day, or even evenings, whatever, I'm available.
I need a phone number because that is a problem in the area, and I'm very concerned about it myself, in that the water is standing and the people are exposed to a high population of mosquitoes when that time comes.
It may be a good idea, maybe, that we could project it on our weekly, on the?
Yeah, Channel 13.
Yeah.
Vector Control.
I'd very much to see that happen.
Okay. I think that would be a good idea, and that way the?
I see them as a health risk.
The citizens could see that projected and make a call. And I'm sure if they would call here also, that at our office, they could get the number also. Ms., excuse me?
Can we have Mr. Gardner maybe give us number?
You want to give that?
We'll also project it on the Channel 13. Jim, if you want to give your telephone number for your office?
My office number is 902-3210.
902-3210.
Right. I'm not in the office all that much this time of the year, but they will have, they have my cell phone number, they can get to me.
We will also see that it goes on our local channel. Okay.
We have a presentation that we put on the local channel usually every year, and it's about time of the year.
About time to do that.
Start doing that.
Very good. Thank you.
People are concerned about that new mosquito.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Coulson?
One of the things you brought up had to do with trash. And to me, it's absolutely disgusting, not just in Pitt County, not just in North Carolina, but in the United States, how people just have an absolute total disrespect. How people just have an absolute total disrespect for their community and everybody else. I have friends that were in Germany in the military. And they said that you could always, you could always tell the US sections because of all the trash. You know what the Germans referred to us as? The people of trash. Such a bright badge of honor. Uh, yesterday, Phyllis and I went into the mall and we went in through Charles Boulevard. And in the wooded section, that entrance and over to the left, because it's not fully greened out yet, it's a depression. Look at the trash that's in that area that has collected over time. I don't know whether it has an outlet in that area. I don't know whether it's just this big hole that's basing to collect overflow or what. I've said this before, if the state of North Carolina wants to make money for the school system and for law enforcement, they need to change the constitution. The constitution specifically states that fines and forfeitures ninety percent has to go to the school system. There is no money in it that makes it worthwhile for the police or the sheriff's department or highway patrolmen or whatever to actually issue tickets for littering because it takes too many resources to do it. If the law were to change and it was like a third to the, to the, to the schools and a third to the law enforcement, maybe even a third to the county, you'd probably see some things done. But it is amazing to me that we as a population have such little respect for our own people, our neighbors, and ourselves. And so you bringing that up, spotlighting it, it's saying there's a unintended consequence. It breeds these rascals, uh, these mosquitoes. You can't even go outside without being covered up in, at nighttime and dusk. And I would like to ask all the citizens of Pitt County, please, change your ways.
The thing that it breeds, particularly trash like this, is the Asian tiger. Uh, this ditch, if you look at it, if you, I stopped and looked at it this morning, that ditch is actually full of mosquito fish. It's called Gambushia. You've seen them in every half the ditches around. If a ditch runs, has water in it all the time, nine out of ten times, it's going to have Gambushia in it. Gambushia love mosquito larvae. But every one of those containers is where the Asian tiger really, it's bred. Doesn't use the water in the ditch. The mosquito can't get inside the cup to get to, I mean, the Gambushia can't get inside the cup to get to the mosquito. And that's where that mosquito is specific to trash cups, bottle caps, anything that will hold water for four or five days this time of the year. And that's the daytime biter. That's the one that's going, you know, that bites you all during the day. But as I say, it's a weak flyer. It's also the one we call the ankle biter because it's always running around your ankles when you walk out. They don't come up high like some of the dry land mosquitoes do.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Children at stake.
Okay. Thank you very much for your report. Uh, next item are, is our managers or is our managers' report?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. A few things to report on. Next meeting dates, April fourth and eighteenth at nine a.m. and six p.m., respectfully. Item B, in regards to the Greenland Community Action, you heard a report from them at your last meeting. And there's a chairman's appointment needed for that board. Chairman Ward has appointed Commissioner Mary Perkins-Williams to serve on the community, on the Greenland Community Action Board for this year. On item C is a good news item, and this item is a combination of, I guess, input initiative by staff and by Commissioner Farley regarding ability to make tax payments via electronically. Currently, you can make tax payments. You can pay your property tax bills electronically, but it's based upon a convenience fee system. Where depending upon how much it is, it could be a flat fee. It's up to like maybe a hundred and forty bucks, a three dollars and ninety-five cents. Or it could be a percentage if it's higher than that. And basically, you could only use credit cards, debit card as such. We now have instituted a solution called like an E-check, which is basically paying your taxes electronically where there's no fee charged. So we've been a while in getting this into place, but it is now in place and you can do it. And the citizens can do it without having to meddle in the payment and can do it via this method, so.
Good. Thank you.
Item D, the Starks Property Auction. This is an item that staff was authorized to attend a property auction of land near the transfer station on Allen Road. We participated in this auction, looking at the possibility of acquiring land adjacent to the transfer station. And we were not successful in this auction effort, land acquisition effort, but did want to report to the board the outcome of that auction.
Good results.
Item E is another good news item regarding our clerk to the board, Kimberly Hines. As you probably read in the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners publication, County Lines, she was one of seven county clerks in the state that was recognized with their master county clerk designation. We would like to congratulate her on that. Kimberly's been with the county fifteen years, Kimberly? Fifteen years. And this is a multi-year process and she has achieved this and this is a great recognition for her and for you as her appointing authority. So, again, congratulations. And that's all I have.
Okay. Allen, take a motion for item C.
I may.
Senator, let's vote please. Okay. And our next item is our animal services follow-up. And as I explained, this is the follow-up to comments that were shared at one of our budget workshops. And this is the findings. So, welcome and thank you very much, Tim Corley and Michelle Layton.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be back tonight. This is a follow-up to the January twenty-fifth Capital Improvement Workshop where we came before you and presented two options at that time for the shelter expansion. Out of that meeting, staff was directed to go back and make a list of mandated versus non-mandated services, which we have done. And also to explore what we estimate cost would be to have countywide animal services and countywide shelter. So we have put that together for you and Tim Corley, our county engineer, is going to go through those options with you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, as Michelle stated, there were two main directives out of our CIP workshop back in January. Uh, the first being just to clearly define what the county is actually mandated to provide as far as animal services within the county. And also to look at the possibilities of putting control and sheltering services under the purview of the county as a whole. So that's what we've done. First, let's go over the mandated services that is countywide. The services that must be provided are rabies control and quarantine of animals which have been involved in bites. So anytime there's bites, we're mandated to follow up on that. Also, we must offer at least one low-cost rabies vaccination during the year, a clinic. And then we must deal with dangerous dogs as they, as they become an issue. So those are the mandated services. Again, that's countywide. Uh, the following that you see below on the slide are the non-mandated services that the county currently provides. And I'll read through those. It's the sheltering of these animals, the adoption that we provide, the education information that the staff provides to the public, canine control, that would be roaming dogs that roam throughout the county, nuisance animals, neglect and cruelty cases, and the loaning of traps to the public. Now, these are, again, are all services that we currently provide that are not mandated for the county to provide. So we talked about countywide animal services and you, as you as a board, directed us to look at what would, what would be, what would happen financially and how it would fall if we did provide countywide animal services. So when we say countywide, the next slide will have a matrix of four options that we've looked at. And when it says countywide, that is countywide control and sheltering. So that would mean as a whole, we would do control for all the municipalities and the county area as well as the shelter. To be able to do the countywide, we certainly would have to have a MOA with each municipality within the county so that we could provide those services within each of those areas. Quickly, the cost of a countywide service for animal sheltering and control, initial capital costs are anywhere from two million, forty-six thousand dollars up to about two point eight million with operating costs of about one point three six five million per year. You'll see on the next slide, we have done our matrix. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through each option and explain each option and what you're looking at so that you can clearly understand what each of these options represents. The first option, option number one, that is unincorporated control. That's unincorporated areas of Pitt County and sheltering of unincorporated areas. So that would be just doing the county areas, no municipalities. That would have to have thirteen full-time equivalences, which is what the Animal Services Department currently has. We would renovate and expand the existing space for the officers, as we've discussed in previous meetings, and renovate the existing space at the shelter. So you see those costs there under the capital. Under option one, renovation is about five hundred thirty-eight. The office is about two hundred thousand. Site improvements, our thought on this was to kind of separate the existing shelter from the from the collection site that's there and provide some
We don't have a, excuse me, I'm sorry, Tim. We don't have a copy of this, do we?
So
It's kind of hard.
That's fine. I understand. It's kind of a small matrix. I understand. Sorry, you didn't get copies of that.
I think she's going to do something.
So again, the site improvements that you'll see on each of the capital, you'll see those on each of the options. That seventy-five thousand is basically a new driveway off of County Highway Road that provides access across the existing land to the north to the shelter itself so that we don't, so we can kind of separate the operations of the collection site and the shelter. We thought that was a good idea at this time to look at doing that. And then design, the design cost for each option is based on the construction cost. That's how our contract with ShelterPlanners.com is written. Um, so you'll notice the design contract cost fluctuates for each option. That's because of the overall construction cost. So the cost there is eight hundred eighty-three thousand dollars in capital cost. That is for unincorporated control, unincorporated shelter. Ten years at three percent, annual debt service of about a hundred and three thousand, a hundred and three thousand dollars. And the operating budget is exactly what we have today, eight hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars. That's the operating budget that we currently operate under.
Tim, you might want to just slow down till we get copies for the board.
Okay.
It's really hard for them to
Understand.
apologize that we didn't have copies available prior to. So of the four options, the first two options are serving the unincorporated. The bottom two options are the countywide. I may be repeating what Tim's saying, but he's trying to buy some time.
On that previous chart, the capital and operating expense, that would be in addition to where we are now.
That would be total costs, not
We're going to show you, when you can see the
It's not in addition to, it's total.
No. When you see the chart in front of you, you're going to be able to see delineated in the green and the blue and the two white columns what the additional capital debt retirement will be, what the additional operating cost will be on top of what we currently do today. The baseline for operating today is about eight hundred and twelve thousand dollars. It's the last column that shows the operating, right, the additional.
That's right, yeah. The difference from operating is that final, that final column.
When you sit in a moment, you'll see what the additional operating cost would be under option two, option three A and three B. And the same thing on the green column gives you all the numbers and then the next column to the right will show you what the additional debt retirement would be to implement, whether it's one, two, three, A or B.
While we are waiting, one of the other questions that I had is the municipalities that are currently handling their animal control partially. For example, according to this information we received at our last meeting from a citizen, Greenville is currently, has a two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar expense. Now, so are the municipalities supportive of giving up that responsibility or have we got that far yet?
We have not had a formal conversation with the municipalities because again, coming out of the budget workshop or the CIP workshop, there wasn't a majority of the board that was saying, go in this direction. You just said, research it, come back. So until we laid it out before you and seen what your direction would be, we'll then pursue conversations with them. One of the things we're going to have to discuss is what type of level of service is going to be employed or put into place. If you go countywide, right now Greenville provides a higher level of service than what the county does with different factions of animal control.
And the word option has an S in it, so there's more than one option in this presentation. And it's still not something that we're going to be voting on and deciding
That's right.
here tonight. This is just reporting back information that was brought up at our budget workshop. Yes, sir.
That may be incorrect. Generally, I understand that when we have things brought like this, we don't do that. However, the Animal Control Advisory Board recommended that staff bring back to us, I guess Scott was going to bring this up, because I asked him to, to bring back to the board a suggestion as to the option that they chose. And also to immediately pursue discussions with the various municipalities so that we didn't have to wait until the budget time. All that could be behind us. So that may take us to have an action to direct staff to, yes, we want them to go ahead and do that now.
I so move.
I think you are exactly right and I don't presume to say that you're wrong and I'm not presuming that. But I do not, we have time between now and the budget process. I don't think anybody thinks after we see this that we're going to say move forward on one or the other.
Madam Chairman.
But I think, my feeling is that we plan to meet again and talk about these options. Is that correct?
If we don't, if we don't, if we do not encourage staff to talk to the municipalities right now, there's ten of them.
I think he's already spoken to most of them. Is that not correct, Mr. Manager?
But, yes, and that, but I'm going to suggest that we left things off the table the last time. That might have been something that would coax them to make it more palatable. The point is, is that if we wait any longer, I don't think it'll be done before the budget time. Because
Okay, well, we can propose that after we hear the rest of the presentation.
I understand that. I'm just saying, please don't say that we won't take action.
No, I don't think I did say that.
Well, yes, ma'am, you did.
If you would like to propose that, the manager do that prior to our next meeting, I'm sure we can get that done. If you'll continue, Mr. Corley.
And I'll kind of start over a little bit briefly to touch on option one again, just since y'all have that in front of you now. Again, that's unincorporated control and shelter. That is fourteen, thirteen full-time equivalent positions, renovation of the existing shelter and office space addition to get the animal control officers under one roof. Eight hundred eighty-three thousand dollars total. You'll see what that equates to as far as debt service on ten years at three percent, a hundred and two thousand dollars, and operating budget is eight hundred and twelve, six seventy-nine, which is our current operating budget.
And if I can add just a comment to that, you see where it says twenty years? The reason it says twenty years is option one is really the, what I kind of call the starve out the municipalities and all the space becomes dedicated just to unincorporated Pitt County. So you'd be able to get by with that debt service with the addition as in the green column per se with the current operating cost. But it would not include, basically as years go by, as the county, unincorporated county grows and the cities grow, there'd be less and less space for the cities. So that's not the preferred situation. So that's option one.
That, on the option one, that capital, have we already approved that?
The, the, no, you have not.
We have not?
No.
Okay.
All right. So if no other questions on option one, I'll move to option two, and that is unincorporated control and countywide sheltering, which is what we do now. That would be fourteen full-time equivalents, so addition of one additional staff member. And that would be because of the expansion of the animal shelter from eighty to a hundred and fifteen animal spaces as well as the office addition for the animal officers. And then design, of course, as I stated earlier, is a little bit more because of the cost of the construction. So you'll see the annual debt service goes to two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Operating budget also goes up about a hundred thousand dollars. So you'll see on that right-hand So you'll see on that right-hand column, 106,521 is the difference from today, or from today's annual budget. So then option three A and three B are countywide control and countywide sheltering services. So this is, this is the countywide element that we've, that we've talked about. You'll see, the first one, option three A, is 22 full-time equivalent positions. The reason this is more, you might notice that option three B is, is actually one equivalent less, is because this would be a new facility apart from the shelter, the existing, so there would be kind of something where we'd have to work out shelter attendants at each place. Whereas option three B is a brand-new shelter at a location to be determined, so the full-time equivalents actually is a little bit less than option three A, because everybody's housed under one roof. And it functions a little bit better as well, because it'll be a new design and will fit the needs of the county. Capital, you'll see, under option three A, again, renovation and expansion as in option two. The office space would have to be increased, because we would take on more control staff in the field that would have to have a place to come back to an office, and the additional full-time equivalent positions that will be staffed as a result of taking on countywide sheltering services. Annual debt service, same at 10 years, 3%, $238,000. Operating budget goes to 1.363 million, and that's the difference of 551,000 approximately from our existing operating budget. And then option three B, again, as I stated, is, is a, is a brand-new facility, which would facilitate all countywide services for sheltering, and this would include the control countywide as well. As per ShelterPlanners.com's estimate, about 2.5 million for construction. Design and site improvements also included is about 2.8 million. So you'll see option three A and three B from that last slide, when we discussed about countywide. That's the reason for the variance, is whether we continue to try to utilize the existing shelter and do what we can with it, and, and improving it, or just building a new, a new facility. Option three B, $327,000 annually on the debt service, 1.36 operating budget, and 548,000. So those are pretty equivalent in the difference from a current operating budget. And again, as Commissioner Coulson stated, at the ASAB meeting last week on the 15th, the recommendation was the final option there, option three B. That was the recommended option, and, and basically wanted to ask us to get direction from the board to actually talk to these municipalities and see what their willingness is to enter into the MOAs on, on these, for us to allow, to provide that service.
That recommendation was from the Animal Control Board?
Yes.
Okay.
That concludes my presentation. Take any questions that you have.
You want to start and go around, or just?
Sure.
Okay.
I know we haven't engaged them yet, but there's a lot of talk about this. Is there any indication as to what the municipalities are feeling, and what's going to happen to their employees, and things like that? None?
I personally have not had any communication with any of them, or heard anything directed to me.
The, the initial conversations we had with the municipalities was more about adopting the canine control fee, the licensing fee. We have not had any formal talks to them about taking over services. We haven't had a definitive direction from you as a board that you're going in that direction.
Also, my, just one more question. What, what's the proposed, let's say we went with three B, which is the most expensive option. What's the proposed revenue source? Is it ad valorem? Is it out of the current budget? Is it something else?
It'd be ad valorem taxes. You're looking at the combination of the 327,000 plus the 548 for about 876,000. You're probably talking three quarters of a penny on the tax rate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Garris?
So with option three A, can, can we do all of that at our current location? I'm assuming we can.
Well, we, we feel we can utilize some of our existing land. That was kind of the thought of having the site improvements, having a driveway-
Right.
-on the other property, so that we could put some parking, maybe free up some of the area that the employees currently park to the rear.
Talking about that spare section there.
Yes, that's right, yeah. So our hope would be that we could utilize the existing space we have to add on to.
Yes. But if, option three B, you would completely relocate it?
Yeah, at a location that's-
And you have no idea where that would be?
That's correct.
And these numbers don't include the land value for that relocation, does it?
No.
No, they do not.
Okay. Well, I think it's important. I mean, all the five speakers tonight were looking at the consolidated option, and, you know, if I look at the holistic picture, that of course makes sense to me. However, we surely, surely need to get the input from the municipalities, you know, what their, what their desires are, options are, and, you know, would they, since one of them would be freeing up a $272,000 year expense, would they be willing to kick in a little bit of that to help make option three A or three B possible? Don't know till we ask.
Some, some of the sentiment we're hearing from some of the municipalities is they, they feel like they're being double taxed, and that the county should assume the responsibility for 100% of this. But as, as was pointed out, these are, technically it's not a mandated service, and technically a city exists because it wants a higher level of service than what the unincorporated county can provide. Yes, you as a board could opt to absorb all of this, but you're relieving the municipalities of a cost that technically they should be bearing.
One other question. Option three A and three B assumes that we would be giving the municipalities the same level of service they currently are providing for themselves?
No.
It does not?
No, it assumes the county's level of service, how we deliver services out in unincorporated Pitt County.
And that would be the mandated and the non-mandated service items you listed on that first chart? Okay, thank you.
Okay. And the things that are being brought up are probably the things that the manager's going to have to include when you talk with the municipalities. Mr. Farley?
Just an observation, this is an outgrowth, an outcrop of what the board did last year, which was the Year of the Dog, I think Mary called it. And I'm just observing that this is quickly becoming the Year of the Blind Cat.
Okay. Mr. Little.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think you're ever going to satisfy completely the county citizens of the county, but I think the county citizen has the right to at least bring forth their ideas and recommendations. And I think you said that on Wednesday, you're going to have such a public meeting where the county can come and voice their concerns about various, various options. You know, I, I think that whatever we do, we want to be mindful of the citizen's ability to, if we're talking about additional taxes, be mindful of, of some citizens not in a position to pay additional ad valorem taxes. If you've got some people that's on fixed income, they just can't afford it. But I think that we got to be, also be considerate that we want to do what's best for this total county in, in moving forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Owens?
I don't have anything to add, I like it.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
Um, I went to a meeting very recently, colleagues, and there was a lot of county commissioners there, because you all know what I said, Charles already has referred me to the Year of the Dogs. And I said, "What is the problem or do, or, or any of you having?" Because I wanted to see if we were unique. And it was a very lively and healthy discussion. So we're not the only county that having issues with pets and that sort of thing, and my eye was open. So I don't have anything ugly to say about it, because some of them were saying some things that I could not even begin to share with you all, and you wouldn't want to hear.
Mr. Coulson? Well, it is very sad, the way that some people treat their animals. And this is a major step forward that the county can do, and yes, we're going to be looking at dollars. The way I understood it, Scott, the fee would still be in effect. Are we going to forgive the fee? That's a rhetorical question at this point, or not. But, you know, I think the bigger question is, what's the right thing to do? For the community at large? And it would just seem to me that, again, and Beth, I don't mean to argue with you, but I think we need to give-
You're not arguing with me.
No, 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 I think, I think we need to give Scott direction before he talks to the city as to which way, which of these options we might be leaning for, towards. Because I think that that's a pertinent piece of discussing with them. And if we leave that off the table, what's he to say? Well, it might be one of these four options, or it might be one of these two options, or derivation of them. I don't know how you can make an intelligent conversation. The other thing, too, is that if we don't give Scott direction right now to talk to the city, I'm willing to make a bet. It won't happen in time before the, before the budget. Who wants to bet me? I'm giving you a two and a half to one odds.
Okay. Mr. Hammond?
No comment right now.
Okay. Mr. Elliott, would you like to?
Sure. In terms of the, the budget process for next year, obviously the Board of Commissioners will be entering into budget workshops in the month of May. All the departments and all the external agencies have submitted budgets. You know, we've read what schools are asking for, just even on the teacher supplement. We know we've got the tax increase with the PCC bonds. We know we have other capital projects. There's reevaluation, there's so many moving pieces in this. In terms of meeting with the municipalities, I don't want to necessarily mislead them, that if, once you get to the budget workshops and we lay out the full budget picture, so I guess if, if you want me to speak to the municipalities, I'd like to have some leeway, because when it comes down to it, you may make some hard choices as to, you may do this and you may not do that, but, or vice versa. But in some respects, it's, it's, in my mind, it's premature to commit, go on countywide until you have all those pieces in front of you. Unless you feel strong enough as a board, you want to give me and the staff that directive, then we'll, we'll go straightforward towards it.
It was my understanding that there had been some conversation with the municipalities, whether they, it had been informal or not. I don't think any of them have taken official action. So maybe what we need to find out, and you all let me know how you feel about this, is, I mean, I'm not sure what it is. It's like you said, Mr. Garris, do we want to say to the municipalities that if it is countywide and we take over, then we expect you to contribute a certain amount of money? Because all of them have not agreed to the other option we gave last year, as far as participating in caring for the animals in their cities. They've wanted it, or towns, they wanted it to remain as it is. So I think what we need to do at this time, and based on what you've just said, is at least contact them and talk to them about, I don't know which option, all of them? I think you said number one was kind of out. And the unincorporated control and shelter county, countywide option two is kind of what we're doing now, correct, with some expansion? And three A is countywide totally with an addition on the other animal. I think we can mention this to them and just see what it is they want to say. Mr. Garris?
To me, it's very simple. We are trying to make a decision, and I think a key piece of information we need before we can make that decision, and the decision is whether or not we feel like we can afford to go with three A or three B. Or that's the way I look at it anyway, because we're already doing option two. So the, to, to make a decision to go to three A or three B, to me, I need the municipalities' input, whether they agree with this, that they are willing to relinquish that responsibility, and how much money are they willing to contribute to relinquishing that responsibility? That's important for me to have in order to make a decision on three A or three B.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Owens?
I think that's the, the essence of what you have, when you have a memorandum of agreement between two entities, or whatever you want to call it, city, cities and the counties. And I think that we, no need to even talk to them about option one and two, because that, that's where we are alone. So if, if option three is, is the best presentation for our citizens of the county and citizens of the city, a part of the county, is for Scott to go to those municipalities and say that we have had input with it along this line, projecting, say, option three, gives him something to go with. Are you amenable to, to considering these? Or, let's, a joint venture is what we're talking about. That's what a memorandum of agreement is. And if you get, as Jamie said, good response, good, we can go with that. If not, then we got to fall back to another point.
Okay. So, Mr. Way.
Just one last thing, and I agree with what was said, and I think we need to know those things well prior to the, going into the budget, so that we can make a, a full decision about what we want to do. But another thing that needs to be considered is that, that the dog fee, I use y'all's term for it, but the dog fee, which, will they, will the municipalities then still restrict the ability to collect it within the municipality? Because they could go with the memorandum of understanding and say, "You're not going to tax our citizens the dog penalty."
I could write input, the, the dog fee brings in so little in the big picture, what you're talking about here. You could rescind the dog fee in the balance of the unincorporated Pitt County, institute on the backs of the ad valorem taxes-
I did okay with that.
-because it's like $60,000, $66,000, Dwayne?
It'll be approached second.
Okay.
I, I think the fee has generated more negative than it has positive.
It did positive.
And what percent of that 60 or 70 are we currently collecting today?
When I did February statistics, we're in the 50-something range. I just did them the other day.
So we can get rid of that tonight?
We're actually getting?
Exactly.
Can we get rid of that tonight, since it's not produced?
Can we make a decision as to which way we want to go?
I think what, if we listen to what Mr. Owens said, and what the manager said, and what we're hearing down there, I think we have some direction for which way to go, as far as talking with the municipalities and coming up with-
I'll make a motion that Scott do that in regard to the memorandum of agreement. Second the motion? As, based on option three B, and report back within 30 days.
Three A or three B?
No, three B, I mean.
Well, three A and three B, as far as the municipalities are concerned, is essentially the same.
Or going to be the same.
Yeah.
But the amount of money down the road's a little different.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So move?
Okay, we've got the motion and a second. Any other comments?
You know what? We just spent more than a half an hour talking about animals. And the gentleman just before that was talking about mosquitoes that kill people, and we just brushed it off. What happens when these mosquitoes come up in and we find some of the children really affected by it? I just want us to just think about that. That concerns me. I know you all, it doesn't have that kind of concern, but it really does bother me, and the animal issue isn't going to go away. But I think we need to talk about some of the pests, that, that the problems that we have dealing with humans as well. And it's just about, I, I don't mean any harm to, and I know animals are important, but we are an animal too. And I like to see us look a bit more about that. I, I know what you mean, Mr. Coulson, but we just brushed that off about the mosquito, the killer mosquito. And we spent how long talking about the animals? I didn't think they paid taxes. I'm just frustrated, that's all. Thank you for hearing me. Colleagues, thank you so much for your patience.
Okay, if you have the information you need, Mr. Manager?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's vote, please.
And, Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I make one more comment?
Yes, sir, you may.
Some of our presenters mentioned something about- Some of our presenters mentioned something about consolidation, the savings, and by consolidating, there were a bunch of grants. Let's pursue that because if there's any of that out there, we surely want it.
Just so you know, I pursue pretty much every grant that I see.
I know you do.
The problem is, a lot of them, we have been denied or are not eligible because we don't provide animal control services in the same mindset and accord. But trust me that anything that comes my way that's got any dollar to it, I apply for.
So do you agree with the statement that was made by consolidating we would be eligible for more grants?
I see their point of view and possibly yes from the national groups.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
But not guaranteed. All right, it passed. And you all can move forward on that, and maybe we can hear a report when you come back at our next meeting.
Well, thirty days.
Yeah. Let's say thirty days. We'll give you that much time. Yes. Okay. Um, Scott, items for decision?
Yes, you have an appointment for the Committee for People, for the Employment of People with Disabilities. It's being recommended that Paula Ligon fill an expired term that would end in February fifteenth.
Move to approve it. Second.
Let's vote, please. Okay. And our other appointments?
I'd like to move that we approve the animal control that's presented to us in our packet.
The Animal Services Advisory Board, you have the recommendation for Allison Dill and Donald Rhodes to be appointed.
Okay.
Dill will fill the vacated seat, or the ending seat of Melanie Bryan.
Okay, we've had a motion. Let's vote, please.
And Rhodes will fill the vacated seat by Ashley Nicole Russell.
Okay. Mr. Hammond, if you'll vote on this appointment, please. Okay, Madam Attorney, we have a closed session. Would you take us into closed session, please?
Yes, ma'am. It has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1 to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the laws of the state and the United States or not considered public record, and also under subsection six, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee.
Motion to go into closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Let's vote on the motion to go into closed session, please. Okay, thank you. Welcome back after our closed session. Do we have a motion? Mr. McGlongmorn?
We do. Madam Chair, I'd like to move to grant a special raise to the Director of Public Information and Media Relation, changing the position from grade seventy-three increment nine to grade seventy-three increment sixteen.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Would you vote, please? Okay. And we need a motion for our closed session minutes.
Yes, Madam Chairman, make a motion that we approve
Second.
the closed session minutes for our February fifteenth closed session as to the contents on.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Let's vote, please. Okay, Commissioner, comments? We'll start with you, Mr. Hammond.
No, ma'am.
Mr. Coulson?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment about potentially what the city of Greenville is looking at again with the red lights and the cameras. Please go on the internet, research it, find out that it's always about money, always. I know that there's efforts at the legislature level to try to get them to where they can get a higher percentage. Back so many years ago, probably six, eight years ago, they were pursuing it. They thought they were going to get $980,000 out of it. And as soon as they found out that ninety percent of that money had to go to the school system, they dropped it like a hot potato. At the time, they were saying it was all about safety. I challenged them, you know how I am. I said, well, I thought you said it was all about safety, but they dropped it. Here's the bottom line. Research it. They will always set it up to where it favors a guilty interpretation, always. They positioned the camera for such a thing. More often than not, they set it up to where you have a long yellow light, young, long yellow light, long yellow light, long yellow light, bam, at the camera, short yellow light. Guess what? People get caught. If you go to various cities like in Wilmington and stuff, they, I mean, they're benefiting from it supposedly. But, but the thing is, if the police really want to do something about it, and I said this once before, stop sitting on Fourteenth Street behind bushes in a, with a motorcycle, go to the traffic lights where they're having a problem, or rotate around to them and catch people. Do it the old-fashioned way, earn it. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
I'd like to thank the Daily Reflector for some positive reporting about the North Pitt Girls Basketball Team. I only wish that the television station would cover that area positively as well as negatively, because we've not seen much about the girls' basketball team and a positive response. I'd like to also thank the community of the citizens in the area. They are working hard to keep the litter up, and they are doing a better job of it. But if you must think about it, remember, litter hurts our community. It deters development, and it makes it look like we don't care. So keep your litter in the car until you get someplace and deposit in its proper place, and we can all grow together. Thank you.
Ms. Owens?
No, ma'am.
Mr. McGlongmorn?
I'd like to thank everyone for their voter support during this past election. Thank you.
Mr. Farley?
I would like Scott Elliott to mention Dwayne Holder and Mike Taylor, who worked together very well in making that E-check project a reality. Now, we get the kinks worked out between my ancient laptop and the webpage, I'll be ecstatic. Thank you very much.
Mr. Garris?
No comment.
Ms. Webb?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. On April sixth, the Association of County Commissioners will host a leadership lunch here in Greenville over at East Carolina University at the Hart Center from 1:30 to 3:30. That'll be, you will all be invited, as well as commissioners from around the region. But the main focus will be the MPA and Political Science Students at East Carolina, an attempt to get them excited about local government and get them working. And it, it'll be moderated by the Dr. Scavo, who's the head of the MPA program. And the panel will consist of myself and a former governor, Jim Martin, will be there to talk about the relationship between state and local government and how these young people can get involved. And hopefully, we can get them moving into local government instead of running off to Washington and Raleigh. Thank you.
I think we may have already gotten the invitation.
Good.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Let's vote, please, for adjournment.